I'd like to call the Maricopa City Council regular meeting to order on Tuesday, February 4th, 2014. At this time, we'd like to invite Chaplain Ricky Gregory up to the podium for an invocation, after which we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Mayor Edward Farrell. Y'all rise?
Father God, we come to you tonight seeking your face for wisdom and guidance. I ask that you raise the head to attention over the city of Maricopa, over our leaders, over our families, over our children, over the body that's here tonight, Father. Give us wisdom, peace, restored joy, better abiding you than you were abiding us. And thank you, Father, in advance for the victory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen, amen, and amen.
Amen to you. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands its hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Chaplain. Appreciate it. At this time, we'd like to move to the roll call, please.
Here.
Councilmember Chapados.
Here.
Councilmember Gussi.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Potter.
President.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move into item number three, the Proclamations, Acknowledgements, and Awards. And although you don't see anything on your schedule there or your agenda, I would like to have Mr. Gregory Rose please stand up. He is our new city manager, and if you'd all welcome him to Maricopa. We'd like to wish him much success, and we're thankful for him for being here. At this time, item four is a report from the mayor. A few different things to touch base on quickly. First off is that there are still a few committee openings for those individuals who would like to serve in the city. We have a position on the Merit Board. If you don't know what these boards do, I encourage you to call the city clerk, which is Vanessa Bues. You can find her information on the city website, or you can feel free to contact her after the meeting tonight. The Merit Board and also the IDA Board, which is the Industrial Development Authority Board. We could certainly use some help and assistance from our citizenry there. At this time, we'd also like to touch base that we have some information regarding the zoning code. There has been a zoning code rewrite that has been going on for some time. This is a really big deal, and it's a very comprehensive project. And the zoning code draft will be available for review later this week. And in an effort to inform our citizens and decision-makers, the city's scheduled a number of opportunities for each of you to ask questions and discuss areas of the code that may affect you personally. I urge all of you to attend the upcoming public open house scheduled for Wednesday, February 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and that will be here in the council chambers. And again, there's another one also being held on Wednesday, February 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the MUSD offices. So again, the first one on the 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 here, and the second one on the Wednesday evening on the 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 at MUSD. I also encourage you to attend the Zoning Code Rewrite Task Force meetings scheduled for Wednesday, March 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This will be held here in the council chambers. This will give you the opportunity to make your voices heard as the task force considers a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on the proposed zoning code. So please tell your friends, your family, and hopefully we'll see you all there. At this time, we also have a flyer here. Councilwoman Gussi, do you have these flyers out there in the lobby?
I will.
Yeah, she will. This is for a meet and greet with a former Dallas Cowboy and ASU alumni, Darrell Klack and Ed Smith, who's a former Atlantic Falcon, Philadelphia Eagle, Detroit Lion, and Chicago White Sox. So this will be held Saturday, February 8th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and it will be at Cactus Moon Promenade Mall, and that's 1269 North Promenade Parkway, Casa Grande, Arizona. So again, February 8th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., Cactus Moon, the Promenade Mall in Casa Grande. So hopefully you'll be able to pick up those flyers here in the lobby here or contact Councilwoman Gussi for further information. Okay, also, just real quickly, I wanted to let you know that we had the opportunity as well to attend a few GPEC meetings this week through site selectors and ambassadors meetings. This is a really big deal because the site selectors are people that come and have direct connections to multimillion-dollar corporations. And being able to have a seat at the table to be able to speak with them personally and represent the city of Maricopa is a really big deal. So I wanted to let the council know as well as the general citizenry that those are one of the things that we're doing and participating with through the ambassadors committee in dealing directly with these site selectors. I also had the opportunity to attend the MAG-EDC Committee, which is the Economic Development Committee. And in doing so today, I think we made a really positive contact with a Canadian official that is actually part of a coalition called the Canada-Arizona Business Council. They've recently started taking memberships from municipalities, and these are the guys that do billion-dollar deals. And so before anybody snickers and says they'll never do a billion-dollar deal here in Maricopa, the truth of the matter is, they actually already have. And this is not a new project, it's an old project. I won't go into details, but it has been done in the past, and they are aware of us. So I think this is a contact that we can further exploit and certainly leverage our assets there to make a big positive boon moving forward from an economic development standpoint. At this time, I'd like to ask Pete Herzog to come forward. Pete, would you come on up here? I want to bring something that you brought to us earlier today. Maybe you can tell us a little bit about it.
This is on behalf of the Maricopa Arts Council. On behalf of Maricopa Arts Council, I'd like to donate one of my images to the city of Maricopa for the Zephyr Room. So this is that's right, last year.
Appreciate it. We'll get that put in the Zephyr Room. Thank you. Thank you to the Maricopa Arts Council. And with that, that concludes my report from the mayor. At this time, move on to the report from the city manager. Mr. Rose.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city. I want to start out just by thanking you for such a warm welcome, the city staff, the community. I couldn't have asked for a better reception, and so I can only hope that the following years that I'm here will be as fruitful and happy as the first couple of days. So thank you. We have a couple of items that I would like for you to be briefed on. The first is an introduction of some new employees, and Mr. Our interim CIO, Gene Martell, is going to come up and introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to take a moment to introduce Peter Feigerson as the newest member of the city's information technology team. Peter, please stand. Peter is in his third week here at the city and serves in the role of systems analyst/ database administrator. Peter's primary focus is on the support configuration and expansion of our public safety IT environment. Even after the short time with the city, Peter has made great strides assisting fire and police with various technology issues and challenges. Peter has over 17 years of IT systems designing, analysis, and support experience. He comes to us from Casa Grande Regional Medical Center, where he served as our systems administrator. During Peter's career, he has a lot of other roles, serving the capacity of systems engineer, network administrator, IT manager, IT director, and IT consultant. Oh, he's in my job. Moreover, and probably most importantly, Peter is a resident of the city of Maricopa and has such wants to contribute to making his city a better place for all to enjoy. We're excited to have Peter join our team, and we look forward to his working with various departments as well as the council, and as well as the council in the months and years to come. Please join me and welcome Peter.
Chief Leffler has a employee, a new employee, that he would like to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Rose, Mayor, members of the council. It is my pleasure to welcome Bobby Miller as the newest Assistant Chief for the Mesa Fire Department.
I didn't hear that.
We had a fully inclusive and exhaustive process, testing process, that involved many members of the department, some of the executive staff of the city, and some of the directors. He was the unanimous choice, by far. It was consistent throughout. Bobby comes with 30-plus years with the Mesa Fire Department. He served as a shift commander, which is the East Deputy, which controls over 20 stations and over 140 personnel for a given shift. He's also had sense as the training chief. He then went on, once he retired, he went on and became the Director of the Virtual Distanced Command Center, which is a state-of-the-art command center for training command officers. He has several sense as a teacher, teaching all things from DOC operations. He has extensive operational experience. He holds an associate's degree in fire science, and he is very close to completion on his Bobby is exactly what we need. He's a welcome addition. Please welcome Bobby Miller.
Honorable Mayor, as you're aware, we are moving forward with the opening of the Copper Sky Regional Park, and I have Brenda Campbell here tonight that will be briefing you on the upcoming job fair.
Thank you, City Manager Rose. Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Farrell, council. I am very excited on behalf of the PD Services Department to be able to announce that this Saturday, February 8th, right here in the council chambers, we are going to be holding a job fair. We have about 75 positions, the majority of them are part-time, that we need to fill between now and the opening of the Multi-Team Center, which is scheduled for March 15th. So we do encourage everyone to come out, hear more about the job offerings. Each of the coordinators and hiring managers will be here to specifically address any questions that you might have. Between now and then, you can also go to the city's website. If you click on Job Listings, you can see the regular jobs that are posted, as well as all of the part-time positions specifically that we're hiring for Copper Sky. You can download an application, fill it out online. We'll have paper applications here for those that want to do it the old-fashioned way. HR has really helped us in streamlining the process, and so we're excited. They will be here with us Saturday on-site to answer any questions, upload, help the assistant uploading their resumes. So again, we encourage everyone to come out and see these positions that are available. I would like to thank the school district, the college, the chamber, and our media partners for helping to spread the word. We do appreciate that and are excited to be able to have these job offerings in our community. I also was asked to speak on something else really quickly, and that is the membership for Copper Sky. If anyone was here yesterday morning, there was a little bit of activity. It was a quite busy morning, and two weeks ago, at our city council meeting, Jennifer introduced Erica E. Gillen, who is our new membership coordinator. She was on day two, so now she's on two weeks and day two. And she did a great job yesterday morning in being able to sign up memberships. I am very pleased to report that we have, as of today, we have 126 members that are already signed up to join the facility. So when it opens for business on March 16th, the 15th is the grand opening, but on the 16th is when they will open for business, we have 126 members already ready. And for those members who've purchased their annual memberships, which we had 32 members do that, they receive Covenant Copper Sky Sports Bag, limited edition, only 100 available. That means there's only 62 left. So I encourage council members, city staff, community, if you would like to purchase your annual membership, Ms. Erica will be happy to help you, and you will have a limited edition sports bag. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, the final item that I have for you tonight is just to inform you that on February 6th, which is Thursday, the Arizona Corporation Commission, ACC, will be considering the Global Water Settlement Agreement. Council members and the public are certainly encouraged to attend. I believe you are attending to represent the city council. The meeting will be held at 10 o'clock in the hearing room at 1200 West Washington Street in Phoenix. And if you are interested in attending, anyone on the city council, please contact Paul Jepson or myself. That's the final item, Mayor.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Before I move on here, one thing I did forget to mention is that for those of you that weren't here earlier, the fire department gave us all a wonderful opportunity to learn about CPR, and so they are holding a class here on February 2nd. It will be at Fire Station 575, which if I'm not mistaken is the Dawn Pierce Fire Station. Is that correct? So it's down in the Heritage District. You can sign up online at the city's website, or there's a smartphone application, but we certainly encourage you to do that. Brad, you want to take anything I forgot there? That'd be wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, it's February 22nd, and just to reemphasize that members of the community can register online at maricopa-gas and got up through the PD Services Chamber, but thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Brad, what time is it, sir?
It's a great question.
It's all day.
And the information is online at the PD Services Chamber. More motivation to go on. Have you left?
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Back to business then. At this time, we'd like to move to the call to the public. This is your opportunity, if you wish to step to the podium and address your council. Again, just by way of remembrance, it's not an opportunity in which the council typically responds, so we invite you to keep your comments short, as there may be multiples, and about three minutes, we invite you up.
My name is Tom Baxter, and I'm the Executive Director of the Maricopa San Francisco San Francisco Sheriff's Department. First, I'd like to say, City Manager Rose.
Thank you. I pre-stated.
What I would like to do is take this moment to kind of recap. About a year ago, your folks let us start the incubator. And as a virtual incubator, three months ago, you elected for us to go into phase three, where we became a, we had a physical site, became a co-op space. Currently have a $25,000, we've established a $25,000 micro loan program that we're making available to the community through our services to assist in economic development. We have, as of today, we have 10 of the 15, of our goal of 15 clients signed up. Tomorrow, I have 11 signed up. This is four short of our goal for the year. At this point, we have accumulated, built a good relationship with the county. In fact, the county has funded for us one of the events we have coming up, and it's 2D printer competition. And generous, and have expressed interest in continuing to see new CD and the economic development community in our area grow. I'm very excited to have them, have them along as one of our supporters. MCD has had the opportunity, has been able to develop and to enjoy a good relationship with other economic development entities within the community. One of the things we are doing currently, in fact, here on March 13th, we're having a joint business expo. It seems to be announced, actually, should have been announced earlier today, that the MCD and the Chamber of Commerce are coming together to have a business expo on the evening of March 13th, which is the morning of the Chamber Breakfast, when the people from Phoenix Mart will be talking about the impact that they will have in the city. In addition to that, the MCD has added, in our corral, we provide space for the STEAM Foundation, the Maricopa, the Maricopa STEAM Foundation. With that, that's a very good mix for us. It includes a lot of STEM activity, and we will be offering support to student national rating. I'd like to introduce, actually, just so you can tell, Rachel Brown is the Director of STEAM. Next to Rachel is Howard Nelson, who is the, who will be coordinating for us. The maker, we are establishing a young maker club program in Maricopa, and he will be coordinating that. In addition to that, STEAM is working on a robotics competition. All of these things will be very beneficial for MCD. Bottom line, we're just pleased to be here. I think we have been moving in the direction that you had us going, and I just want to express gratitude for allowing us to go in this direction.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Sorry, that was me. President Anderson.
Makes me nervous.
It should.
Mayor Price, Vice Mayor, Mayor Farrell, council. Tori Anderson, I'm here on behalf of Against Abuse Incorporated. I do serve on the Board of Diractors, but I have been a lifelong resident of Maricopa, so this is a passion of mine. I wanted to remind you, in case you didn't get your invitation, but I know you all did, our Ninth Annual Seeds of Change Gala is March 1st. It's as fair as this year, starts at 6:00. All of the proceeds from that event stay in Maricopa, they go directly to our Women and Children's Domestic Violence Shelter programs, outreach programs here in Maricopa. So it's pretty exciting. I'm trying not to do a little jiggy dance, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes how important this is and how passionate it is. It's been nine years. The shelter is under construction. Thank you. And it is set to be finished this spring. We have hired our first time full-time, first full-time employee, which will be the domestic violence coordinator, counselor for the shelter itself. So I'm excited. I hope you will join us again, so you might want to make sure City Manager Rose gets filled in on all the details. So it's exciting, it's great for our city. There is information available at seedsofchangegala.org. This year is pretty exciting. We are doing multiple bidding, so actually going into the whole IT, trying to bang with the young people. So I just wanted to remind you, I hope you'll join us. It's great, we have a great turnout. We do have wonderful sponsors, and I have already sold half the tickets. So you better get online, go to seedsofchangegala.org and get your tickets. So thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Price, is that?
You're good. Thank you, Tori. Appreciate it. Mr. Wade.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm here as a representative of Chief Stahl, Assistant Advisory Committee, and thank you for what he's doing. We are working together, I'm working together with our youth representative for a program we call Respect and the Benefit of Doubt. Basically, words both ways. We expect young people to respect officers that they can contact with, and vice versa, and to give each other the benefit of the doubt. We had a meeting here last week, excuse me, last month, we had approximately 20, 25 young people, together with some older people in the room, and this is a call to the public, to others out there who would like to participate, particularly the youth. We're working ourselves towards a town hall, a youth town hall. So I'm inviting the community to come out on next Monday, Monday, the 10th, starting at 6:00, right here at City Hall in the Cotton Room, to participate in Respect and the Benefit of Doubt. And if you would like to come out, we would certainly appreciate having you out to participate as well.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Price, Councilman, my name is Rachel McCall, and I just attended as a volunteer today, it's called Family First Community Development Corporation. And what they do is they have Ready for Life programs for after school, and it's offered at Maricopa High School. And it's on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays at 2:30 p.m., and then on Thursday nights at 5:30, they offer parenting classes. And this is something that I didn't even know existed in the community, and I just wanted to present to council, to let you know this is going on. And they have complimentary meals, personal development, coping skills. And today, the session where I was able to participate was artistic expression sessions, where the students are able to just kind of release through ads, art, things like that. It was really inspiring to see how the youth really received it and were able to just have time where they were just able to free express themselves. So just wanted to share that this is something that's being offered in the community. I really enjoyed it and want to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you. Peg.
Mayor, council, I'm up here tonight at the request of one of our enhancement program instructors, it couldn't be here. Why don't you just let everybody know that there's going to be three free classes offered. It's currently in the Maricopa Activity Guide, but the class dates are going to be before the next guide comes out, so we wanted to make sure that people were aware of it. These are all free safety seminars. The first one's going to be Saturday, February 15th, from 11:00 to 1:00, and it deals with child safety and abduction prevention. The next one is the following Saturday, February 22nd, again from 11:00 to 1:00, and that's going to be a bullying prevention class. The third one, and one that's very close to my heart, is going to be Saturday, March 1st, again from 11:00 to 1:00, and this is a woman's basic self-defense class. The classes are open to the public, they're all going to be held at the ATA Karate on Honeycut Avenue, just a few doors down from Honeycut Coffee. Again, they are free. The children's classes, they're geared for ages five and up, and for the women's self-defense class, they're looking at ages 13 and up, but anybody under 18 needs to have a parent or a guardian accompany them and also participate in the class. So on behalf of our enhancement program instructor, I wanted to make sure that everybody heard those dates, and hopefully you can attend those classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda.
Mayor Price, Vice Mayor, Farrell, and the council. I come before you today as a resident of the community and also a member of the Historical Society. And when the Arts Council presented the picture of the Zephyr to you, it sparked my memory that the Historical Society has the opportunity to open the California Zephyr about twice a year, and on Saturday, February 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Historical Society will be out at the California Zephyr, providing free tours. It's a great opportunity to see that, a little bit of nostalgia, and think about riding the train in the early days. It's a great event. We typically have other historical things on display, so I did want to make sure the community was aware that Saturday, February 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00, the California Zephyr will be open, free to the public.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mayor, members of the council. To follow up, Mr. Baxter, my name is Rachel Burnell, and I am the President of the Maricopa Auction STEAM Foundation. And I just wanted to introduce myself and our foundation, as we are fairly new, and let you know that we just did hold our first annual strategic planning session, and share with you that we do have four major initiatives that we with you that we do have four major initiatives that we will be focusing on this year, one of which is currently in progress. Those initiatives are, to begin with, the robotics program that we will be pushing through the city of Maricopa. And by the way, for those of you who do not know, STEAM does stand for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. And our vision is to increase engagement within the community in those core disciplines. We have two teams already participating in the robotics program at Maricopa Elementary School, and they have both been invited to participate in the state competition in March at ASU. So this is a very big first for our city, and I'm very excited. Our goal is to grow this program over the course of the year, and eventually have a team at every school and in ASU, at MUSD, and other organizations if they wish. Our second initiative is a Young Makers Club, of which Mr. Howard Zolti will be our program manager. And the goal of this is to form a community of young makers that concentrate things on act development, and 3D printing, and circuit design, and get them interested in science and technology on their terms, right? Let them make and grow things. Our last two initiatives, the first one being a partnership with Maricopa Unified School District to help enhance professional development for our educators. As you know, we are looking to move these schools, a few of them to charter schools, and as a few of them focus on the STEAM disciplines or STEM disciplines, we do want to be able to support them in their growth so that they can educate our youth and bring our community closer. The final initiative that we'll be focusing on this year is really trying to build a community aquaponics lab in preparation for the SciTech Festival next year. We want to do this in partnership with University of Arizona, have been in contact with them. But this would be a great showcase of our agricultural community of sustainability in the city, and bring together a community to help enhance those that focus in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Rachel. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public and move on to the minutes. Thank you very much for your announcements and participation this evening. At this time, I'd like to take a motion for acceptance to 7.1 and 7.2.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.1, this is the public hearing, CUP 13-03. The Mayor and City Council shall hear public comment on a conditional use permit, CUP 13-03, a request for extension of CUP 08-07 for an additional five years to allow administrative and bookkeeping offices at 45057 West Hathaway Avenue. If you wish to speak on this item, I do not have any speaker cards, but you may approach the podium and speak to this item only if you so choose. Seeing no one, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Council, may I have a motion to approve consent, please? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, and like most agendas that have nothing on the regular agenda, that really means that next few weeks is going to be really long and busy, so I hope you all come back. We have nothing on the, under item 10, and we have no e-session. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming this evening.